The council members can hash out how we're going to do this selection process for our Inspiring Spaces Committee, or whatever name that they may come up to call themselves. Be with us and impart to us all the wisdom we need to do what we need to do here in this place called Hickory, North Carolina. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Berry, I have... This is what we have instead of... You had summarized the things we had questions on.
Mm-hmm.
But that's pretty well the place here, is that right?
Yep, it is.
Well, we... Our staff have given us little football motifs since we got the... Since we have the national championship tonight, so any of us that do throw a flag out there...
I used to do this.
Back, didn't I?
Back in the day.
Ten, fifteen years.
Did the referee take it away and the referee give it?
Yeah.
Well, I used to umpire little league baseball.
Shot of the flag?
We didn't have flags, but I tell you what, we got a little heated. Their parents are tough.
Well, I had a surrender flag.
You're the extra replay guy, right?
He's the only one.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Berry.
Let's go.
Okay. I'm not standing over here so I can see my own PowerPoint presentation change after last week. Yeah, so we got... We thought we had a little bit of fun because Frank reminded me that we've got a game tonight. He said, "I can't believe you're scheduled on a meeting Monday night." We'll get through it anyway. Ducks versus Bucks tonight, I guess maybe. So wanted to first of all just kind of discuss with you all, you know, both the rules of the games that helped you have a productive meeting this evening. And what I'd like to do is review what... And these are just my notes, what I thought was kind of consensus from the last meeting, make sure this is consensus. Second of all, would suggest that do you want to consider a discussion time limit on any particular option of 10 minutes? To kind of say, "Are we ready after 10 minutes of discussion to handle this issue?" If not, do we want to put it on the sideline, move on with the other options, and then maybe come back to the ones that we weren't able to have a vote on or be ready for in 10 minutes? Does that work for you all? Do you all want to handle it that way?
I think that... I'd say after 10 minutes, we vote.
Okay, well, you can do that. You can either vote or you can put it on the sideline.
We'll just vote it after 10 minutes unless we have a majority, we'll put it on the sideline.
Okay, great. And then we were just joking. No cheering, no jeering, or excessive celebration. We don't want any flags thrown for any TD dances or anything like that.
No spiking the flag.
No spiking the flags, no spiking the ball, no spiking each other. Just a little fun. So let's run through what I felt like we had consensus on after the last meeting. The simple addition of other projects consistent with the referendum being included in a couple of places. Everybody okay with that? Must have filled out a survey to be considered for appointment. This wasn't actually on any of our material, but came up in the meeting. Seemed to be a consensus that we do want people to fill that out. That is consistent with the policy that you already have in place for all your boards and commissions. We ask that every member who serves on a board or commission fill out that application form so we know who they are, what they've got going on.
Can we clarify application and survey? Your language says survey.
Yeah, the survey is the application. We took...
We have two different lists, two different databases, which differ by about 60 members.
Yeah, it's down... Yeah, is it 60 now?
I mean, I don't know. The survey has 97 respondents and the applications are about 150-plus. So there's a significant difference.
The applications of today is 131, and the survey participation was 172. We just got that back.
172 filled out that just very generic application, and then 131 of that.
The full application.
Right. So the difference is the survey was something we got out there really quickly just so that we would know, people could say, "Okay, I'm interested." It's a way to raise your hand, "I'm interested." The survey takes your board and commission application that everybody fills out and just simply added about five more questions specific to the bond. So I guess what you got to determine tonight is having filled out the simple survey, which we had a deadline of last Friday, to say, just raise your hand saying you're interested. So that deadline has passed. Obviously, it's just something that we can change if you all want to. And then having the survey information, which gives you much more specific information about their interest, their ward, whether they have all that kind of stuff. Do you need to have a deadline on that or not? And I've got some thoughts on that as we kind of walk through it.
Do we have... You spoke to policy. Do we have any other boards and commissions where there's deadlines for applications?
No.
Okay.
And sometimes they get appointed and we ask them to fill out sort of the application afterwards. We just require that we have it on record.
How about the timeline for the boards and commission appointments? Because I'm looking at one that this person may get an appointment by the board or commission. When will we know their commissions, their appointments?
Well, those are really on your agenda every meeting where you have openings. And they just kind of get appointed. There's really no deadline. They just get appointed as...
No, I mean, doesn't each board have an appointment on this commission?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
That's... I'm sorry, that's where I'm going.
So would they have a deadline of when to make their... Yeah, that would probably be sometime before the first meeting, obviously. If they have a quarterly meeting and the meeting date gets set, let's say in March, then we say all the boards and commissions, okay. By that March meeting, you either have met, selected your person to serve Exevisio, I got you, sorry. So that is a topic that you all need to... So let's pull that off the game plan, Johnny. Let's put that on for something to discuss. Because part of it, I think, depends on how you choose to make your appointments. Having a deadline was something I came up with because I was working under the assumption that either a subcommittee or staff was going to put together a draft group for you all to consider. If you all choose to just make individual appointments as city councilors, then that really doesn't matter. I mean, then it's much more like your other boards and commissions that people can express their interest whenever. And as openings come available, then they can be appointed. And there really isn't a need for a deadline, in my opinion. If you choose to do it that way, that makes sense.
There needs to be a deadline on council to get this initial committee established. Then afterwards, I agree with you. I mean, the vacancy will occur, and then it will be incumbent upon, I guess we go back, the person who appointed the individual who vacates.
Right.
It would be up to them to replace that person.
Seem like you have consensus on the staggered terms, one, two, and three-year initial terms. Maximum terms of two, two, three-year terms. And one- and two-year terms are counted as a full term. So if someone's appointed to a one-year term initially, they can serve that one year, that's a full term, then they can serve a second, a three-year term for a total of four. Are we in agreement on that one?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? And filling an unexpired term counts as a term. One of the options we had in there was the city manager and staff provide that draft slate, as I mentioned. I got the sense that there was consensus that that was not an option you wanted to consider, so I've said that there's consensus on that. It's no longer an option. Eliminated. Chair and vice chair serve staggered terms so that you don't have both of the leadership roles changing any year. Subcommittees would be of the commission. You had a good discussion about how that would look. And I got the sense that you wouldn't want the subcommittees being appointed by the chairman just from anybody in the community, but it needs to be of the commission. Exevisio members have a voting right and 10 members being in the quorum. Two consecutive unexcused absences constitute retirement. Anything else of those 10 we feel like we need to pull off and discuss? We got the whether or not they filled out a form and if there's a deadline survey.
Didn't we have something that said, "In any event, a person would not serve more than six years on this commission"?
No, it's consecutive. So the way it's contemplated now, two, three-year consecutive terms is when you max out. So in theory, you can serve six years, sit off a year, get reappointed, and serve six more years. Is that something you all want to add to the list for discussion or...
Should there be a total maximum like... I mean, I don't know.
I just... For some reason, I recall there was.
We don't have that.
And I said, "Well, I think that's reasonable," but...
We don't have that anywhere else, I don't think.
The current language is capped at six.
Right.
The current language.
Right. What was in the draft that we started from, capped at six? Not for your entire life, six consecutive.
No, six for the entire lifetime.
Period.
Yes.
Okay. So John Trump's appointed, he can serve two, three-year terms, maximum six years.
And then he's off.
Okay.
Unless they want to change that.
Do we do that with any other board or commission?
No.
I don't think so.
I'm not aware of.
What do we know how that transpired, what the reasoning was behind it?
They already denied that in my office.
Oh, okay. So what...
I mean, you know what you were saying.
Okay, I mean, I'm not thrilled or against it. I was just curious if there was a reason.
I don't think if one is a major contributor on it and everybody feels they would like to keep that person, I don't have any problem with them sitting off a year and then applying for another year.
So do you want to make it then just consecutive? And then you can clock and start over? Or you don't have to put any of them on? Our thinking was simply, you know, you've got 170 that have expressed interest in serving that... And it's over a long period of time, so you can have different people coming in and going out of the community. That was our only thinking, was it just kind of kept it revolving. If it's not revolving naturally... But...
No, that was it, too. Allow opportunities for graders as an engagement and involvement. As new people come in and out, that kind of thing.
So do you want to put that on items to consider?
I think consider... This is just an opinion, but as I think about it, it might be a good idea because we've never had this kind of response of citizens wanting to be involved in something. So it might be good to just have, you know, six years is enough. At that point, we're going to get new blood and let somebody else have a chance to express what they think.
Could somebody go three years, then sit off a year, and then go another three?
Well, they're going to have an initial term of one, two, or three years, is that right?
Yeah.
And then eligible for reappointment.
Okay, but...
But they're only eligible for reappointment.
One time.
One time. So some people will only have four years under that premise.
Okay.
Some would have five, some would have six.
I don't have any problem with that, with the way it is.
So six and you're out.
Six and you're out. Okay. So we have consensus. You got... Actually, you have that written on there. It would just be consecutive, be six max.
Like it said, six consecutive max.
So you can do a two, three, one?
No.
Six is... Wouldn't that six?
Well, actually, yeah, I guess you could.
Sure.
Well, no, all appointments are going to be for three years after the first time.
Yeah, that's right. After the initial term, you won't have one and twos anymore. All you have is threes. Because then you'll have a staggered cycle and everybody will be appointed for three.
My notes, if they get the two, they get reappointed for three. Can they run for one more?
Well, there is no one more.
There's no one.
You have to be appointed to a three-year term.
It would be three, and that would be illegal under this principle.
Okay.
These mathematicians.
A lot of ways to add it.
All right, so we made progress. We're just a few lengths away from first round.
Yeah.
Okay, so the options that we'll go over in more detail are the appointment process, composition, the deadline, whole discussion that we were just starting to have. And then ultimately, I guess your decision tonight is do you feel like you're ready to have another draft ordinance put together to move forward with the public hearing, which has been called and advertised for January 20th? That's kind of the final question for this evening, if you feel like you get there. Okay. Can I rearrange this a little bit and add a little bit more from what I had emailed you all earlier? Just to try to put it in order of if you make certain decisions first, that'll kind of knock out other decisions. So when you think about the appointment process, I guess the first one is do you want to have a subcommittee of city council appointed, which reviews all the applications, and then they bring a draft slate to city council? Second one is looking at number B is looking at each city council member has four appointments. And then I've got a bunch of scenarios under that. And then C, there really is not a C at this point, that you should certainly come up with other options. Do you feel like you want to discuss and rule out the subcommittee? Or decide that is the direction you want to go? How would you like to proceed on that one?
You want to just go down the line and say with each of us?
Or somebody can make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we go with B.
Which one would be the...
Well, we can have discussions.
We eliminate A, as we're saying.
Okay, you're like a motion, we eliminate A, okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Gess and a second by Patton. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to discuss that I think the pivot decision is not the appointment. I think the pivot decision goes back to... And I may be splitting a hair into like really minor stuff. But I looked at the survey respondents, and I looked at our community demographics, and they are not at all consistent. So if we go with a general appointment, we're going to have to amend the draft ordinance to take out the language that requires our commission to be reflective of the community's demographics.
Yeah, we talked about that, and I think you can decide how directive that language is.
That's prescriptive. Membership will be reflective. And I think that... I don't think we can make prescriptive language.
Well, you've got "will be" to the best...
247A is membership will be reflective of.
According to those who apply. I mean, it's... We can't... We got to go... We got to pick from the people that put in an interest. We can't... I mean, is that not true? Are we not restricted to those people that have filled out the survey and passed and come up to the deadline?
That's the discussion I think should supersede the appointment because that'll make a decision on how I feel about it.
Well, then we would pick from the applicants, basically. And that's your demographics there. Those are the people that showed the interest, so that's your pool.
Yeah, we're not going to jump over the applicants.
That's your pool.
That didn't apply at all, that didn't show interest at all, are we?
They have had ample opportunities to apply.
Does that make... Does what I'm saying make sense?
Yeah, it does.
That's the pool.
But we are going to have to amend that language, you're right. It'll have to be amended, and I just... Yeah, I'm totally okay with that. I want to get away from filling out surveys. We may make a general application. We don't have to worry about filling out surveys, but...
But the way you...
And deadlines.
Is you make that wording where it comes from the pool.
But if we don't have deadlines, I mean, this could go on forever.
It does. It's a bond commission. It goes on for the next...
It goes on until somebody...
Well, the repertory will have no deadlines. We're going to set deadlines, I hope, or an understanding between our council members that we will have our nominations ready for one week or two weeks after the 20th.
And then in two years, we'll have another pool to pick from.
Yeah, it's just like every other appointment.
And there will be no deadline, just like there's no deadline on any of the other...
That's right. That's what I understand to be the case. There's no deadline.
I kind of think that's right. But the first time, we just need to push ourselves to get this done.
Right.
This is the only time there will really be, quote, "a deadline," is to pick the initial group. And then after that, it'll be like any other board and commission that people can fill it out. And when there's an opening, you send us whoever's applied.
Well, not want to split a hair again, but I don't want to... We can't write that in ordinance because we cannot pass an ordinance in which you said you must have applied by January 16th. And the ordinance doesn't become effective until February. That's unfair.
There is no line.
Okay, so we would have no lines?
No, that wasn't in the ordinance. I think that was in an email I sent you all saying we've got that deadline.
Okay, okay, good.
It's a pleasure.
Good, okay.
So let me... So we are saying that people can, in fact, apply up until the effective date we set, but the ordinance may not.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's good. I hope that we get the word out through the city and other...
Yeah.
Hey, if you want to do something about representation within your ward, then round up some applicants, and we will consider them.
Was there a motion in a second not to go with one A?
Yes. Yes, it was. We never did vote on it, though, I don't think.
Well, because we started clarifying.
There was discussion.
And we had enough discussion on A to call the vote.
Enough hairs that are splitting.
Right, you don't have many.
You don't have many.
We ought to double the number, though, if we put them all.
Okay, we got that motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, and all members are present.
Okay, so one A is eliminated. Okay, so that takes us to one B. So one B, city council members shall have four appointments. And then, of course, you have all these criteria, which you could have, and there's more that could be listed under there, but just to work through those. If you choose this option, then as a council member, simply responsible for those appointments, and they have no restrictions. In the city, out of the city, business owner, not business owner, in your ward, out of your ward. You know, I mean, really, you all are the ones deciding what kind of parameters you want to put on your appointment process. There's nothing that's going to dictate that, except yourselves. Second, each council member of those appointments must reside within their ward. The next one, each council member may appoint any city resident. Now, these can... You know, these are mutually exclusive, and so we start getting down to the last ones. Each council member may appoint three within the ward or one at large. That actually just came from discussion by staff, as we were saying, is there any other way to look at this to address some of the issues you all were discussing last time? So you have three in the ward and one at large. That might give you not to appoint a businessperson. You can determine if the at-large is in the city or out of the city. If yes, the mayor shall appoint up to three members only if there is an obvious need for balance on the commission. I think that's close to the language that just stated mayor in the meeting. And then C is simply, okay, if not each council member has four appointments, what else would you like to do or say?
The list of applicants we have now, which has been identified by ward, is that correct? All of it's available to the public, or is it?
Can be made available to the public. We have, you know, there's a link to the document that you all have access to. We haven't specifically done that. It's all... We look at that and it's all public.
The documents from the survey?
Yeah.
With their addresses and stuff, that... I mean, just the names or everything would be...
It's all public. We've looked at that before.
But I'm looking at this one, and there's a few that have the words wrong.
And had to fill it out.
Then they could, yeah.
And that's just what they put in there.
Yeah.
We did have little maps that we could...
So they could...
I'll get us started. I think my preference is going to be B, Warren. I don't know why... I can't think of a good reason why we would restrict ourselves as to who we could appoint if that's the right person to appoint. And if we do that, then we can do any of the rest of them that we want to, remaining two through five. I can't think of a good reason why we would restrict ourselves as to a person who we want to appoint to this board or commission. But we are each accountable for all of our appointments, either to all the boards and commissions. And I tend to agree with Hank that, you know, if we have four... I mean, I know maybe one out of the 30-some, it would not hurt to have one or two dynamic people who have a stake in Hickory, own a substantial business, pay substantial taxes, but may not reside in Hickory. Therefore, if you don't have any restrictions, I'm accountable to four appointments.
I agree. I stand with Hank and Bruce on this in that not only... And then to take it sort of one cut deeper, we remain accountable to the voters, that we're going to make the best decisions that's right for the bond process.
Just like we do in everything else.
True. We're accountable to all the citizens, so I'm with that.
Okay, so you are... I have the impression you were looking at it from the standpoint mainly that you could appoint anybody who lives in your ward or who lives in any of the other wards.
I can appoint anyone who is in the pool.
Including people who don't live in Hickory?
Yes, sir.
But would they not have to own...
If they're in the pool. If they're in the pool.
Which means they put their name there. That's all.
Wouldn't they have to own property, though? Didn't you stipulate that, that they owned and paid taxes?
That's fine. I could be agreeable to that.
Own property and/or pay taxes.
And/or pay taxes, yes.
And I'm just playing devil's advocate, I promise. Including a businessman who owns 5% of the business that pays taxes?
If he pays taxes, I would say...
His business pays taxes.
Yeah, if he's paying taxes, just like every other voting resident of Hickory, then I would be okay with considering that person for an appointment.
If his business pays taxes?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of how much he owns?
Regardless of how much he owns.
Okay, so let's sort of bifurcate that for a second from the first deal. Because I'm not comfortable with that language restricted to business owners and their taxpaying. It gets way too complicated, and it sort of undermines what we just said. The principle being, we're accountable for our pointees and we're accountable to our voters.
Okay, I'm with that.
Okay, so that's sort of the bottom period.
Okay. So we're not going to worry... We're not going to have any specific requirements on board?
No. I mean, you know, if we want to make four really, really bad decisions, then we'll have to...
Then we'll be accountable for them.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm good with that.
That was your motion, right?
Yes, sir. It's my motion.
And that motion has nothing to do with inside or outside and business paying taxes.
Just like number one says, council is responsible for appointments, and there are no restrictions. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
That includes business on... That includes people who do not have any tie to Hickory except they like us a lot.
If a council person wants to go there...
No restrictions.
If they want to go there, then that's their...
That person have to do a whole lot of convincing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't... I really don't think that's going to happen, to be honest with you. I can't ima... I mean, we're not going to restrict ourselves to that.
I just wouldn't want to ever have to fight that battle if we have the permission that it could be done.
We're each responsible for the people that we appoint to this commission, period.
You might have some nice and expert in all this, and they live in Burke County.
It could be. I mean, I doubt...
Burke County's pretty close.
Yeah. My thinking is that that probably won't happen. But I don't see why we would restrict ourselves if we were in need to do that.
And I see enough good people in this pool already that's not the complete that I can't imagine that any of us would not have a nice source right here of people that would serve and want to serve.
I would surmise that we would only have at most one or two, the parameter, if that. If that.
Okay, I'm just going to say that I am not comfortable... You know, there may be a point that I can get comfortable with someone who owns an interest in a business that pays taxes. But I'm not comfortable with saying that we can just open it up to the whole world.
And we control this.
I mean, each person controls him and her, himself or herself.
Right.
I don't control you. You don't control me.
I mean, we do this type of thing all the time.
I know I'm not going to do it, but I don't...
I'm following.
I don't know that the person that takes Mr. Gess's seat is going to do it tonight. We just don't know what might happen. I just don't see opening... If I were a taxpayer out there, I'd say, "Why did they do that? Why'd they open it up to the whole world, whether they pay taxes or not?" And then say, "Well, we're not going to do that, but we're going to have it in there."
Well, that goes back to Mr. Lell's point.
And Mr. Lell's got a separate point, I think. Your point is, we decide on whether we appoint them by wards or any wards.
No, no, no. My point is, we are account... My point is, we're accountable for this decision, but all decisions we make. And so it's in our... We have to make the best decisions we can, given the information we got, every time we meet. And appointments to the bond commission is the same thing, and...
And whoever replaces us in a future election has that same responsibility.
And I don't think they'll take it lightly.
We don't know.
Well, that's up to... I mean, that's now.
They too will be held accountable.
Well, I mean, even, you know, God forbid that happens, and somebody throws in... They aren't going to throw in 4%... Four votes out of 30-some, so you... I mean, you're still weighing a minority.
Okay, everybody through? All in favor of no restrictions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Next matter, Mr. Berry.
Okay, because that eliminates the rest of D and C. You don't need to deal with... You don't need to deal with this one either.
Well, those are dead.
Okay, so now we're on to your ex officio members. So the question is, do you want to limit ex officio members to city boards and commissions? One of the options that was discussed at your last meeting was that each council member uses their four appointments on his seat fit. They feel like an organization needs to be represented and they appoint somebody from any organization. In the draft ordinance, based on previous discussions I had in there that the Chamber of Commerce had an ex officio member. So that's kind of, that's kind of an option 3A, option 3B, you want to have other outside organizations be ex officio as well. And then whether you, whether you want to have your ex officios be just city boards and commissions only, the conversation came up, should we add the university city commission? I actually thought we had that in the draft we sent out, we went through a bunch of drafts before we sent one to you, and we did not. So that's a little more oversight on our part, and for some reason thinking that it shouldn't be a part of it. And then is there any other board or commission, city board or commission that you think should be included that's not?
What were all the ones proposed, was it art?
Maybe you could say which ones weren't.
You have the.
Planning, I mean, I was just trying to.
Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Community Appearance Commission, Public Art, Community Relations Council, Business Development Committee, Parks and Recreation, the Youth Council.
That's right.
Well, no, you don't have Recycling Advisory Board, Library Advisory Board, International Council, or Citizen Advisory Committee, and the UCC, University City Commission, those are the four, five that we did not list, although from a staff standpoint, I think we should have listed the University City Commission.
What's the role of the Citizens Advisory, are they the ones that approve?
CDBG applications, yep.
Okay, so I would move that, that the board, city boards and commissions that are in the draft ordinance with the addition of the University City Commission, the ex officio members. Well, with the understanding that we're going to have the other entity discussion separately.
Which ones are we leaving out, that's what my question is.
Based on Mr. Lell's motion, the Recycling Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, the International Council, and the Citizens Advisory Committee.
The only one, is the International Council, why, why do we feel, I mean, I don't understand that. Why would we leave that one out? Is that handy? That's, that's something, that's the international group, the whole, I mean, why would we leave out our international community in a, in something that is as diverse as what this commission is intended to be?
Yeah, you make a good point, I'll amend my motion to include the International Council.
The Citizens Advisory Council is the most diverse group we have.
So I mean, we're obviously.
All but recycling.
Or recycling.
And the library recycling.
And the library recycling out, all the rest in.
Yeah, and I, and I only, I mean, I'm not trying to create something here, but I mean, why, I mean, if we're going to do everybody else.
Let's do them all.
Yeah, why leave them two out?
And because we know, we know we're going to get people who have demonstrated a commitment to service and a commitment to betterment of Hickory.
That's correct.
And that's going to be a nice toward that.
If you leave a group out, that's almost saying that they're not as important as the rest of them.
Yeah, I, look, I'm, I'm standing on the ground.
I just don't want to do that.
Maybe recently passed and other things that we.
I'll amend my motion that we. Thank you for the discussion, they didn't even get a second, you know.
How many of these are currently sitting on the board commissioners? That could be considered.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's, there's some, I mean, I've seen a couple, quite a few.
Okay, so now should we say, if you're already sitting on a board, that you can't sit on both?
No, 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 no.
You might not get picked.
Yeah, we, we don't have, we don't have any restrictions, so we can, we can decide that.
You don't have any restrictions.
I don't know, I don't know who'd be designing the algorithms to check.
But if someone is, just pick one of the board, the Citizens Advisory, if someone, if they elect to put someone on that, we wouldn't know that till later, correct? And we might appoint someone, so they shouldn't appoint, it'd be wasting votes.
I would assume we would just go back.
Double dip.
Double dip.
Get somebody else.
Well, what you could do is you could ask them to make their, make their selections first, and then you all make yours after they've already made theirs.
Yeah, that would.
One of the other, yeah.
That would be.
Yeah, one of the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whichever works the easiest for staff.
Because some of them don't meet every week.
Well, you have, we have, we have a call meeting, I mean, it's one of those things where we say, okay, well, council wants to make appointments by this date, you all need to have a call meeting between now and then and select which one of your members is going to.
Either a call meeting or action without meeting if they can, but I, I do think it'd be important that before their first meeting, we say, this is the complete commission. I just think that sounds good. So do we have a motion, Mr. Lell?
We do, I can remember it.
This is the motion to include all of them.
Real simple, all of them.
All of our boards and commissions will have one representative, and that's a separate issue from the Chamber of Commerce.
Right. Ex officio, correct.
We got a motion by Lell, second by Zagorov. Any further discussion? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
I would further move that the Chamber of Commerce be allowed an ex officio position and no other outside organizations at this time or until such time as we wish to amend the ordinance.
I don't agree with that personally, I feel like if you have the Chamber of Commerce as ex officio, what is to say, whether it's DDA, neighborhoods, all these other groups that say, well, they also want very much to sit at the table, and if you start with one of them, like the chamber, then why not, just like we've said, is one more important than the other? And if you feel very strongly, then let that be one of your appointments, you get it done. If, if that's how strong you feel about it, and if I feel very strongly that I want someone from DDA or Salt Block, then that would be one of my appointments, since we are not restricted, you've got what you want.
We don't have a room big enough.
We don't have a room big enough.
What's the size of this committee now?
It's about thirty-seven, thirty-six or thirty-seven.
It's up now.
We've added.
We've added five already.
That will not be a problem then.
No, it's not.
It will be the first meeting next year.
You've got his motion on the table, is anybody going to second it?
I seconded it.
Okay.
Oh, no, 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 excuse me, you made the motion, there has not been a second to that.
No, that's correct.
I will second it, and I, on this premise. People with the right intentions made a commitment to the chamber, and it's not something that we need to have a snag over at this point. And the chamber will be providing good input, just like our other thirty-five, thirty-six members, and it won't be disproportionate. I second.
And to further, if you feel that strongly, then that can be in one of your appointments, but I don't think someone that should, that committed, should have committed for this council to make these decisions, and I don't think that's wrong.
Well, I understand your point, it's just a battle that I'm, I'm making, I'm seconding it because I don't want to fight the battles.
Then it can be appointed by whoever feels that stronger.
Okay, the motion is that we have the chamber, have a chamber representative.
As ex officio.
As an ex officio.
Only.
And I, well, everybody's, ex officio's voting, ex officio's voting, and the chamber's the only one. But it would be appointed by the chamber. Isn't that right, is that the motion? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
That is six to one, Mrs. Patton votes no.
Okay, so no, no need to discuss any other outside organizations, the motion turned part of that. So you're doing great, you haven't hit the ten minute deadline yet.
Two minute warning.
So what we need to come back to then is the discussion of what to do with the application. And just conferring with Ms. Dula and correcting Ms. Dula if there's something I'm missing here, but it seems like where you, where you have ended up is that because you have an appointment process that has no restrictions on you to make the appointments, there really is a need for there to be a deadline on an application. Now, the, the application that we've asked people to fill out a survey collects about five or six more questions than the information that we gather from everybody who's seeking to be on a board or commission. And of course, we ask some specific questions to help you all know a little bit more about their interests and their background. So I guess the simple question is, is are you in agreement, there is no deadline, people can continue to fill out that survey all the time, we can leave it open, and people can constantly fill it out? Recognize, no?
Yeah, I don't think, I think we need to, we need initially a deadline to get this thing going, do we not? Otherwise, we can, six months from now, we get applications coming in.
We need a deadline for the appointments, applications will continue to come in.
Just like, just like the other board.
Right, you're going to, once, once you've made that appointment, then everybody knows, well, there isn't another opportunity to appoint for at least a year.
Okay, okay, sure, well, I misunderstood, yes, okay.
But what that does is it alleviates any, any stress in the next three weeks of, you know, someone came up to you, or you go find somebody and they, and they want to be appointed, but it's too late, we're not cert, we're not receiving any more surveys.
Well, it's no different than any other board or commission.
That's right, it creates and treats them the same thing. Except if you are collecting additional information, that's what Ms. Dula and I were just talking about, making sure that you feel comfortable with the fact that you are collecting a little more information than you say you do the rest.
Yes.
So I would say the deadline, the effective date of this legislation is going to be fourteen days from the twentieth, is that right?
If you all, if you all take action on it on the twentieth after your public hearing, then you have a second reading, two weeks after that, and it becomes your law, is that right, Mr. Crone, Ms. Dula?
That's correct.
I do have a question that we haven't discussed yet. Is it available to us how to, how to contact these individuals where it's not on a public record? I can under, I've had people that have had discussion on me about they want to apply, they want to put out the information, but they don't necessarily want their phone number or that kind of information being public.
When they fill out that survey, it's a public, it's a public record, they use it.
That might, that might keep some people from.
There's no choice.
Well, we say, we say upfront on the survey, in the very first section of the survey says, the information you put in here is a public record. And whether or not they read that and know that, because I did send out just all the emails, and then one of the applicants emailed me back and complained that her email was listed out there for everybody to see.
That's probably the lady that called me.
Might be. So I have to blind copy things since then, but technically it is a public record.
And there are outstanding people who don't run for public office, because they don't want information.
I just want, I wanted to clarify that, because people want to know if they're going to do this, that, that they can, their phone number, their email is public record.
Right, it is.
And the meetings are open to the public.
Minutes will be kept.
Over meetings long.
All of that's.
So they are exposed to the public.
I would say, and I don't know that we're going to make a motion or what, but I'd say that the expectation would be that the council members will have their nominations X days from the effective date of this ordinance. That could be one day, two days, I think it'll be the same week. The longer we stretch it out, for one thing, the more people are going to think that there's some kind of secrecy involved, which there isn't. There will be conversations between council members, like I have my four and so-and-so wants to serve, would you be willing to appoint him? There's going to be that kind of stuff, but the longer we put it out there, the worse it's going to be.
You may want to put a deadline that you'll have yours in within ten days after the effective date of the final ordinance.
First meeting following adoption of the ordinance.
Well, that could be the next day.
Can you guys, after the first reading, we've never overturned anything on second reading. That doesn't mean we can't. But after the first reading, we probably are going to know what the ordinance is. Given that we're already out, we will, when we approve this, we'll be out three months from the date of the election. Can't we just get a commitment to go ahead and get our appointments in the next day? After the final reading, after the second reading.
I think we need to appoint in, in open session, which would be the following meeting. But maybe we don't, I would prefer to make my appointments in open session.
I think the appointments ought to be in public session.
That's just like we do all the rest of them.
We do it, we do a lot.
Alright, so we can't really do it the next day. We can do it the next meeting.
It could be announced and be a public record, but I'll agree, that's not the same.
And they have to be agreed upon or appointed like you do the others.
We have to vote on them.
Meet at a city meeting.
Right, right.
Okay?
Does council accept those nominations, or do we actually, we have to, as a body endorse them?
It's, yeah, if you treat them like all your other boards and commissions, you know, anytime you all have an appointment, you all vote on that appointment.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, so one, one, Mr. Crone and I were sitting here talking, one item that we, we moved past that maybe we needed to address is B5. The mayor shall appoint up to three members only if there is an obvious need for balance on the commission. So the way I understand what, the way it sits right now is, that has not been acted on, so that would not be in existence. And it would simply be, well, that's a point, that's why I just was asking, Mr. Crone, is the mayor considered a city council member for the intent of this appointment? Does he have four appointments?
I think he's got the same for everybody else.
He's got the same for everybody else, just like.
For many wards, right?
Yeah, well, so can we.
Well, everybody can.
But I don't have to.
No restrictions.
We have to, we do have.
Yes.
Well, we need to clarify that, because, I mean.
We all have four points?
Well, I mean, if all of you have four, it needs to say that the mayor and each city council member shall have four appointments.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
That's correct.
I move for that clarification.
I'll second that.
How many seats have we got?
It's twenty-eight, plus nine.
That'd be twenty-eight plus the boards and commissions, each one.
I'm just thinking total.
Plus the chamber.
Be more than thirty-nine.
Well, it's almost impossible for me to vote no to that. Look like I'm running from something.
Yeah, I think, I think they have to reach again.
Do we have that motion? Who made the motion?
Me.
Bruce, I second.
That will not be forgotten. All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. It's unanimous.
Okay, so next steps are, we'll, we'll draft up the. So we'll draft up a new ordinance with all of these decisions y'all have made tonight. That'll be available for the public, you can stay on track with your public hearing, which would be next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow. Applications just stay open, and the only deadline is when you make your appointments. You miss anything else?
Can we get an updated current list of those folks who are through the second process?
Yeah, you got, you got a printout, but, well, it was as of Friday. But what we'll do is, we'll send you a new link, apparently Ms. Patton's link to the new spreadsheet didn't work, so you may have some technical issues there. But the idea was let y'all just have access to that spreadsheet so you could see it as Yadi updates it.
And I should know this, he has phone numbers.
Oh, yeah, it's got. Social Security numbers, bank, no. Doesn't have that. It's got a lot of stuff.
Okay. And, and.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
Somebody had to throw the flag. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.